Andy Holloman, board member and chair of the governance committee calling this meeting to order on August 3 at 11:01 PM. I'll pay you, sorry. Introductions around the room.
Marty Lane, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Andy Hallman, Chief Financial Officer.
Jared Bryant, Superintendent.
Corey Vase, Teacher and Anchorage Education Association President.
Margot Bellamy, Scoopler.
Amanda Foster, Executive Assistant to the Board.
Ellie Lessons.
Board Member.
And do we have anyone connected?
We have Mike Flackenstein. And Carl.
Yeah. Carl, I think we need to.
I just promoted him, thank you.
And that would be Board Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll go to the first item discussion, which is a review of our board policies of 411, 0500, 0510, 0520, and 0530. I'm trusting anyone that has concerns read those before. Mr. Bell.
Yes, thank you, and I'm really glad that we're getting back to our routine of looking at our policies at least, even if we don't make changes. But in 04411, I think that's our service animal policy. The policy speaks to service animals, so it's our animals that are trained to provide a service. It does not speak to comfort and pets. And which is, so my point is, to what extent are we, I don't know, I don't want to say enforcing, but observing the policy. I see random pets in our buildings. They're not service animals, they're not, they're not providing a service, they are there for another purpose. Now, if the board wants to have, and the whole intent, I think, behind 411 is to make sure that individuals have a safe learning environment, and that that environment is free of, you know, that individuals with disabilities can access learning and activities. That also includes kids like my grandson, one of them is fearful of dogs, period, I don't care how sweet and loving and kind they are. But I do see, when I'm in and out of buildings, I see a lot of pets and comfort animals. And I don't know, so I don't know if the administration might not be able to do it today, but maybe give us a, I'd like to know what are we doing relative to 411 and our, you know, are we enforcing the policy as it's written, number one. Number two, if not, do we need to make adjustments? And it's not the kids bringing these, it's an adult issue, let me make that real clear, it's not the kids bringing their pets to school. It is, it's the adults bringing their fur babies to school. So, and I think that is a, from a risk management perspective, where does that put us if something happened to a, to a and anyone that's in our building, whether that's a visitor, a student, or a staff. So, I don't want to change the policy, but I do want to know to what extent it's being enforced. Are we in some, are we at risk in any way, and if there are changes, or maybe we need administrative guidelines? Because I don't think there are any administrative guidelines.
I think that's a good point, and that's something that I can raise with Jim's team in risk management, just to double check whether or not there's an administrative regulation that touches on this. We certainly don't want an animal to cause a safety concern regardless of who created it. So I agree, either it's an administrative regulation or an adjustment to the policy, I think a regulation should be sufficient.
If I could add to that, I did ask Dante Howell and Henry Ball, two employee relations specialists, to review this and make sure that there haven't been any updates under ADA as well. I didn't get that done for this meeting, but they are taking a look at that. I believe we have a service animal guide that would probably serve as a functioning AR, should be attached to this, so I'll review that as well.
Right.
I can add a little bit of flavor to what you brought up, Margot, and that we have done some servicing of principals on a fairly regular basis to remind them what questions they can ask when a member of the public brings an animal into the building. There are some very specific questions that you can ask and you can't ask around service animals, and so it's probably good for us to remind our academic divisions that we do that again, that often happens for, which we want. When you talk about staff, are you talking about mostly like teachers and staff wanting to bring in dogs and people into classrooms?
Teachers, educators, yeah. It's.
Non-service animals, just pets.
Yeah, they're pets, they're pets. I think the reason we have, I, you know, policy came about probably in 20, I can't remember, but it was in response to an OCR complaint, and so we had to come up with those guidelines that you mentioned, and we had to adjust our policy, which was approved at the time. But I just know that over the last few years, I have observed that it's becoming more and more lax. I know, I, you know, I'm not an anti-animal person, but I have to look at this from the, for me, it's a 10,000-foot level or higher that we have to look to see. And I don't think, so maybe, maybe that's all we need is a refresh and a training, reminder to people that, you know, sort of, you know, what service animals are, what our policy is. And then I'll just leave that to the superintendent, whether or not he feels that there is a need for a revision at some future point, or if administrative guidelines could kind of clarify the policy. So that's, that's the only thing, that's the only, yeah, that's my only comment on 411.
Sure. Boy, I'm probably gonna, I just want to clarify, service animal obviously has a definition, and usually a certificate or some type of registry that goes with it, right? Because I know I went through it for my own dog that was at Clarbs for five years, right, through pet partners. But are you also, like, I just want to, there's service animals, and there was the horse that was at Russian Jack.
Right.
Yeah, we've done lots of things, so, and then there's critters, critters being extending everything else, right? And I just want to, I want to clarify.
Pets, pets, maybe the, yeah, so critters would be like pets.
So it's, it's two, well, there's two separate things going, right? So whether I have like birds in my room, I had parakeets for a long time, hamsters, over the course of my career, I had fish, I'm just, it's, it's a double.
Right, but that's, they're usually enclosed in a container, right? A hamster, hamster should be, yeah, and so.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, and I'm just, I guess I'm reaching out to the whole community here, we probably need to, I mean, they play a really important role in schools, right?
Yeah. They do, yeah, and this is absolutely not that. Policy speaks to animals who are trained to provide a service. If a parakeet is trained to provide a service for an individual with a disability, then that would put them in that category. But if they, if they are, if they're in the room and they're providing an academic, you know, they're there for an academic purpose, then, you know, they should be allowed to be there with the proper safety protocols. So, I just think we need to revisit the policy and make sure it is in alignment with what we're actually allowing people to do in our buildings. And you're right, critters included.
That's why I kind of, I mean, that's why I've got, pets, pets is extremely general.
It is.
Yeah, and so I just want to, and I'm obviously a huge advocate for little critters when they are properly maintained, cared for, safe, everything else, so.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we've all known, right, that they play, they can play a role.
Absolutely, and that's, that's, that's not, and I don't think the policy is locking those out. I think that the policy is, you know, what constitutes a service animal in the context of individuals with disabilities and/or other kinds of notifications.
Note for the record that we were also discussing.
I guess I wanted to add my support for critters who do academic and social emotional work in classrooms. So I support them as learning platforms and devices, for lack of a better word. But in the policy, you know, it is a little bit fuzzy, where it says service animals is not included in animal, it's primary worker tasks, this is to provide a personal support, wellbeing, comfort, and community. A lot of people do consider those as animals.
And this was a pretty SEL.
So, so I guess, I was eager to see revised guidelines.
Guessing your son. To that point, like, I was a principal, we had a student suicide, but the chaplain died.
Not just my grandson. Yeah, not only that, he's got allergies, and one has diarrhea.
That was amazing, watching people sit around that animal, cry, breathe, and it was.
I'd be supportive of investing in a whole fleet of golden retrievers for a young student, I think, that was my personal stance, yeah.
Oh, no, I can't remember the pony, it's not a pony, but.
I actually put boogies on one at a school one time.
And a diamond, the kids wanted pets in the classroom, and we just live trapped some mice, which simply states some of the mice that lived there versus the ones in here.
So, and I think if animals are in our buildings, they should be for academic and/or both academic, service academic and social emotional purposes, yeah.
Service academic.
And right now, that's not clear, and I don't, I don't, I think we can do it through administrative regulations, but I'm going to leave that to the superintendent in this step.
So, Mr. Bell, I'll start with this on 411 on an agenda for a month from now.
Okay.
And we can push that along to more time as needed. But it sounds like in writing the regulations, it might also fall for some factors in policy. Any other comments on this? Same, any comments on any other policies on 411?
The next one, 510.
And I will add that, you know, these policies can be amended to some.
I didn't have any others unless anybody asked.
I had a question on 510.
510.
And did we have one? Did one, did one of these take place last year? I simply tried to Google it, but I, I didn't, this was nothing that I found. I know that deed has report cards, but that's their prerogative to produce.
That's, I think that's.
But I, this is a district produced, and I vaguely remember some sort of a shiny colorful publication when I first onboarded. So that would have been a couple of years ago, but I don't know that I could, I couldn't locate it online if there was one. And it also struck me greedy that that a lot of the goal monitoring that we do is the sort of thing that would be part of a report card, but it also seems a little bit silly to duplicate things.
Right.
So, I don't have a specific concise recommendation right now, other than that I was scratching my head looking for whether or not this actually exists. And maybe thinking that we can do a better job of tying up our goal monitoring reports with a bow on a annual basis.
And so my, and I'll go back and look, remember lessons, I think in light, because the state has not always done district report cards. And when they started that, I want to say, I think it was a year before I came on board, maybe it was in 2017. But when they started that, the board at the time pivoted to put that information on our site, as opposed to us redupating the state report card, so.
So, I guess, I mean.
Yeah, so, but, so.
That's pretty clear, so that we're going to prepare.
It does, so then either we're going to do that, or we're going to change this.
Right.
To say, I mean, that we're going to pivot to the state.
And I think, I think us having ownership over it is probably in our best interest, right? I mean, especially if you were to tailor it towards, well, these are our goals, this is where we are with progress towards our goals, you know, over the gifted year. I think that allows us to tell our story
Yeah.
a lot more quietly
Yeah.
than the state. I mean, I think about, you know, what is our story? Well, part of our story is the maintenance work that happened, you know, over the summer, there are a lot of stories in ASC. So I think there's a lot of value to us owning, and this is like also part of, you know, an expanded communications sort of program.
Yeah, you see a handout, I think it's sent to every single family.
It was a, it was a shiny handout, and, and it may not need to go just to parents, I think that there's, I mean, I just saw a recent study saying that it's like, but schools are doing pretty great, because people who don't have kids in school systems
That's it. Yeah.
that are a lot more susceptible to schools.
Yeah.
So I think that there is a lot of value to having a report card, and don't exactly know what it needs to look like, but I guess for the purpose of this, for this meeting, I'd say maybe let's hold on to it and continue the discussion, and maybe hear from administration that just kind of about what what you guys have a vision in.
So, yeah, I'm kind of like, first year that would have been a part of the, I think, in the administration, well, Kirsten probably would have been here. I'm just trying to figure out who would, because I think it came from assessment and evaluation.
In collaboration.
I think that's where it came from.
With communication.
With communications, yeah, right.
I suspect that through the pandemic and the really small communications department, it may have carried. But I remember that publication you're referencing.
But, yeah, I think there's a lot of.
Morning, morning, welcome. So, it, so, might, I recommend that we take another look at, as the superintendent said, take another look at 510 as well, and come back with, and I think, I, I, I agree, I agree with remember that in light of our new goal, my goals and guardrails and our monitoring process giving in your work, or not just to our families, but to the community, to be, and not just rely on the state's information, I guess. But.
These are what our community's goals are.
Yeah.
This is what the district has done.
And it can be focused on our goals and guardrails.
Right, and you can talk about how we allocated funds in support of each of the goals, each of our rails. For the communication of something.
Back to you, Mr. Chair.
And note for the record that we've been joined by Gary Drummond, who's a board member of this body, and a record slider that always prioritizes public education for students.
And Pat is now on, and he has his hand up.
And Member Higgins is on the line.
We done with that? Are we going to pivot, or are we going to finish this?
Oh.
Oh, Pat has his hand up.
Oh.
It might be this.
Yeah.
Pat, you need to move over to panelists.
Hello, yep.
We can prove the item too, real quick, that's CWA updates.
He's on there now.
Yeah.
That would be Carl.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, so at President Bellamy's request, and in conjunction with the board adoption of board policy 3311.2, I thought about making suggestions for President Bellamy to name members of the SCWA review team that will comprise the team for this academic year. There, the SCWA review team is comprised of one member of designated by the administration. Dr. Brian indicated that that choice would be Mr. Dave Whiting. My recommendations to President, President Bellamy include a representative from industry would be Alicia Amberk with AGC, a representative from the building trades, which would be Bronson Frye, who is their current chair, and then two members representing the board. My recommendations to President Bellamy include this chair, Pat Higgins, and the second person would be Andy Holloman. The, the board policy is written in such a way that we can, and President Bellamy, as the person naming the members, can choose committee members to replace board members positions potentially. In my conversation with President Bellamy, I suggested that for at least the first year, while we navigate this new policy, which is a significant one, it might be wise to have board members directly involved to witness areas of improvement in current board policy, as well as any potential revisions we might wish to make, you know, around this time next year. With that said, I think next steps in the process, should President Bellamy agree with the recommendations, would be to officially state as much. And then, should those recommendations carry, the chair of the committee, Member Higgins, would work with Mr. Whiting to facilitate scheduled meetings, which should start this month. I think the, one of the first orders of business should be to review the master template, ensure that their, the review team is in agreement on the composition. If there's any changes that need to be made, those should come back before governance and before the full board, if need be, and then engage in the work as outlined in board policy 3311.2. So just wanted to offer that quick update, would be glad to answer any question.
Right. Thank you, Member Higgins, I accept the report and the recommendations. We are, we, with the launch of Axialo, I think when, if the team gets together, the review team gets together and gets organized this month, they will probably be launching in September, so that would probably be a clarification. I also confirm that the administration's, yeah, Mr. Whiting will be the administrative, the administration's recommendation on this review team. For those of you who are, who might, you know, you might want to go back and re-read 3311.2, it's a very, the duties of each of the, of the, the, the team, the review team is very specific, and I think we will hopefully stay within that framework and the guidelines of policy. Are there any questions for Member Jacobs? Well, it's only been a year and a half.
Thank you, Member Jacobs, I appreciate it.
So I think the next step then would be for Dr. Bryant, for us to, and Member Higgins, and Mr. Whiting to get together and decide on lay out the next steps really, so that we can look at a likely a September launch, not an August launch, because I think we need time to get people together on the same page, and then put processes in place to get the work done.
Thank you.
Comments, any action maybe on this? Same, hearing on item three, draft revise board goals.
And that's really just a, just an announcement, I do need to, the board began working on revising our goals. We did not, we revised what we have, or in the process of. Uh, we did not, we revise what we have or in the process of during our retreat. We are not finished. It's a long process because we've also, uh, there's a piece for the administration. We're still waiting on the, uh, to hear, hear from the state on the Alaska Star Cut scores. So there's a lot of missing pieces still, but we are poised and ready to continue the conversation. And with the board's indulgence, I would like to schedule a, and to capitalize on the facilitator being in town during that time. I'd like to schedule a meeting, a goals revision meeting on September sixteenth, it's a Saturday morning, nine to twelve. But if at all possible, please, if we can try to make that work so that all board members can have input. We had, uh, input during the retreat from, uh, probably half the board, but we really, we really, in order for it to be, for us to get to, to really, uh, understand the, the, uh, you know, the direction, I think we need to have a real focused session. So I would like to, uh, get the board's approval to do a goals and guardrail planning session on nine sixteen.
I have a question related to that. Um, I just wanted to show that that is the day of the AASB Fall Academy, that same weekend. And I know that, I don't know who, what facilitator you have in mind, but I glanced at the AASB and I saw.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be Cindy, Council Grace City.
Okay, okay.
And yeah, and I did take that, thank you for that, though, but I did take it into consideration, and we go, after, after we're done, at noon, I'm hoping we just shoot back down town. At least that's my plan. Um, and, and I, and, but that's the only, Cindy's in town doing some work with another, in, in the state, doing some work with another district, and I'm hoping she can, and, and she's agreed to fit us in if we could do it on that. So, thank you, guys. So Amanda, if you could send up.
Invite.
The in trouble, yes. That's it for that.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, item board timing and submitting items to governance.
Yeah.
And, um, I'll start by just saying that, that governance is under the same constraints of the Open Meeting Act, which are general board meetings, um, and specifically to, uh, Mr. Higgins, I thought we put it on the agenda, but what I wrote was, it would come up on the new business, um, because we do have that avenue to introduce things here that way. And I think he knows why for that. So I, and I forget, what is the, the last day prior to a meeting we can change the?
I think it's technically twenty-four hours, but the norm we have set is seventy-two. Um, I can send you a legal opinion that I got, if you would like.
Um, I'll take your word. So yeah, I'll, I'll say that we always want to try to get free day service, um, when we can. Listen, but those are for actual changes to the agenda. New business can be done on the spur of the moment, although it's always nice to have a little bit of advance for things, but, um, yeah, we'll address that today. Um, yes.
So the, the part of this, we had part of this conversation during the retreat, and I remember, um, Lessons had a concern relative to, for those revisions, mostly for things that you, if we're going to be wanting to revise a policy, it is rare that it will come in, while, while it's rare that it will come to governance and then just go right out of governance on the same day. Uh, we have had, we have been doing that, uh, on some things that were time sensitive. Although, if we really, we need to be more thoughtful about giving board members time to look at whatever it is you want to bring forth. Uh, and, and, and so that they are able to read it, think about it, digest it, and then analyze it. And that takes time. So I think that if the, the expectation for the seventy-two hours has been our practice. Uh, if we can stick to that, I mean, I mean, for the public notice. Uh, for board members, though, I think as, you know, when, when the, when, when our regular meeting is over, we plan the agenda the very next day. That's two weeks out. Now, I'm not suggesting we have to do it for our committee meetings, but we really should be more timely, give, give each other more time, especially if we're looking at making policy changes. Um, so, uh, setting your agendas, um, early enough to where we can give board members adequate time, and then we can also give the public ad, adequate time to see what's going to be there. And Carl, how to say, Sam, though?
Uh, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, President Bellamy, for the remarks. I, um, I did want to just confirm that our board policy says our agenda should be published. Seventy-two hours ahead of time, just typically why we see our full business meeting agendas published on Saturday ahead of our Tuesday meeting. We had talked about having a, um, new business section of our board meeting, which I was vehemently opposed to, um, in part because the, the full board can make policy revisions and, um, make changes to how we operate as a group, whereas a committee can't do that in and of itself alone. And so for that reason, I think the new business section is a great way to, um, act as a quasi, uh, non-action item section or an area where board members can articulate something they're working on as an area of interest, um, to identify a partner to collaborate with that can then be placed on the next agenda. So I think the way we are set up currently works great. Um, but I do think it's important that we, um, make sure our agendas are out seventy-two hours with the appropriate items on them. And then for folks who missed that cutoff, that new business section there is, is perfect for that reason, to get ahead of it for the, the following month. So I think we have a good system in place.
Point, point of clarification for this group. If, um, if a policy is slated to be reviewed, or if, um, somebody brings something, something up and is working on editing a specific policy, I think one thing that I would find helpful personally is if the proposed revisions were also available ahead of time.
Yes.
So if, if I'm editing policy one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
I think it would benefit the body for me to bring my revisions to one, two, three, four, five, seventy-two hours, so that everyone else can look at them. And I guess that's what I would request, is that revisions also follow, oh, also queue to that seventy-two hour window.
And that's a good point. I mean, in my mind, that's what it should be. So if I'm bringing forth the resolution or policy, I'm bringing forth what I want that to look like. What, uh, um, and if there is existing policy, we should show what the change is going to look like. So I agree with that a hundred percent.
And then that would give board members that time to respond.
Yeah, and I think we're doing it, we just gotta consistently do it. I think that's the only reason I put it on. It's not that we're doing a bad job, guys, it's just that there's so many pieces and there's, you know, there's so many things coming up that I don't want anything to get lost. And so if you are, if you have something that you really want the board to take note of, then please put it in writing, and please, um, get it to Amanda in as timely a manner as possible, Amanda and myself, so that we can uh, make sure. And if you miss it for a committee meeting, you can do it on the new business. But, uh, yeah, so, yeah, we just gotta do our homework, do it timely, and share it with the board members before uh, the meeting starts, not during the meeting, before the meeting starts. Thank you. That's all, that, that's the only reason I had that, I asked to put that on the agenda.
And Pat has been standing up.
Sure.
Uh, Member Higgins?
You're muted.
Sounded good, though, didn't I? Um, let me, uh, two things I'll say. Uh, one, I apologize for getting this late. I did send it out to, uh, to the board, I did not get it to Andy for whatever reason, I sent it to others initially, and just to do it. And I, and I was under the impression since we last, uh, governance committee, we said we would bring it up in August, that it was automatically there. So my assumption was wrong, but I'd also say that under new business, even on the full board, I recall a time where a new business was brought up to brought about an issue, I think it was, uh, Memberman Holloman, Member Holloman, but, uh, and we dealt with it. I'm hoping that at least in this meeting, we can at least, without taking action, discuss it. We have a former board member present, uh, to comment on it that will be of information important going forward. And, uh, I will have other, uh, former board members join up, uh, as needed to overcome any uh, concerns or issues that are in regards to the importance of the Operations Audit Committee. Uh, this has been a two-year event that I've been trying to push for, at this particular point, and I would appreciate at least the support to be able to allow, um, uh, uh, former board member, uh, Harriet Drummond, also former, uh, chair of the Education Committee for the, uh, for the state legislature, uh, to make comments and to give her that opportunity now that she has shown up for that purpose.
We can certainly do that.
Matt, just to clarify, the prior discussion had nothing to do with the, with that, with, with the.
This particular issue.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments? And, uh, I'm thinking that, uh, something would be helpful for board members, it's just a flow chart about how you bring business to the board. What things go through, what committees, what the timeline is for committees to work on, and how that moves to the board agenda. Because we do have that process where things come to a committee first, rather than being brought to the board meeting, so. Yeah, I will spend a few minutes and start something that's certainly in direction.
My copy has elaborated a few on that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, moving to item five, Indigenous Language Resolution.
Okay, and that was, that was a question. I think in our May meeting, our second meeting in May, we got a resolution. I just want to know, what's the status? Did we need to do anything with that, or was that the, um, was that, that the Native Advisory Committee's resolution that they just submitted to the board?
Right, uh, so it appears that they submitted this resolution to the board, but this was also the document that they reviewed with the administration prior to its opening to the board, where, um, we sat down with the president of the NAC, we reviewed this document, and came to consensus as to what the, the joint priority is, which would be, um, Indigenous language immersion programs. Um, so that's where I left that with that meeting. I think you'd be, we met with the new president, now that's who has graduated on to do amazing things. Um, just to hear what the next steps are, but we're very excited to collaborate.
Is, is, so is there anything in your thing, what, what is the next step for the board?
I don't believe that there is a next step for the board.
Okay, it's not, it's not there.
The only thing is that as we go into the, um, budget solutions process, I did share a commitment to growing our UBC immersion programs. And that would be the one thing that would come to the board during the budget development process. Um, but I believe last time we spoke about that program, you wouldn't have supported it anyway.
I guess I wanted to just, um, refresh my memory, and I looked at this document, had it printed out at home somewhere. Part of the resolution is that ASC elevates Indigenous language education as part of its strategic plan and formal goals and guardrails out through twenty twenty-six. So I just, if we're talking about our board goals, it seems relevant to acknowledge that that's a part of this resolution. It's not something that you, you are arguing as a, it's a smart goal.
As a smart goal, right, but it could be an intro. Yeah, so put it up for nine sixteen, get it on the list, so.
Okay. And I would say that in the meeting, that piece was not a topic of discussion, as I wanted to double down on the Indigenous language. Um, but perhaps that was something that they had wanted to talk with the board about, I'm not sure why this seemed.
So we, and we will be meeting with them. Who, who's got the Native Advisory Committee this year? Is it still me, or Carl? I think it's me.
I don't have the check, and Carl does have his hand up, so maybe he can speak to that.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I recall when we last spoke about this in governance, that Dr. Bryant, which is something I appreciate, reiterated his support for, uh, the immersion program, which I, I think was one plank of the resolution. My recollection, similar to what Member Lessons alluded to, is there were other more structural, um, changes, or at least, uh, review for structural changes requested in the resolution as well, and um, if there isn't consensus from administration to adopt the recommendations um, of the resolution, it would be at least my request, uh, in the form of maybe, maybe it's an information request as to the administration's stance on why we wouldn't want to adopt the initiatives laid out in the resolution, some of the reasonings behind it. I'm interested to learn more, because I, I do support the immersion, for the growth of the immersion program, I think that's important, but I, I think there's more broader, um, structural, at least considerations to be made. And I, I'm thinking back to our, um, CK, CKLA, um, curriculum adoption process, and that, that process still, I have some reservations about how, how we integrated, um, our team and even potentially the structure of administration and who has seats at the table. And so I think there's other conversations to be had there, but I want to be mindful of my role as a board member, so, um, interested to learn more from administration, I don't think this is the, so the form to do it, but prior to, to creating a, a resolution which would simply mirror the language of what the NAC requested, uh, the board to support, if we can get on the same page between a board and administration as to what we shouldn't be pushing for, what, not, not to work against each other, I guess, is kind of my, um, request before we get too far down the road. The other thing that I would say is I believe we settled on that, uh, President Bellamy and I would co-represent the NAC this year, which I think is in, in part what we did last year, which I'm, I'm happy to do, um, but that's going off of my recollection, thank you.
So am I correct, we're not, we don't need to take action?
No, no, it's just that, I think, we needed to do anything, but superintendent has, I'm, I'm trying.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, moving to new business. We, we do have an item for new business, correct? And, um, Amanda, do you have a copy of?
A copy of?
Uh, what, Member Higgins, is this, is this?
I have never received a copy, no.
I, I don't have a hard copy of it. Uh, Member Higgins, do you have a hard copy of what you're proposing?
I, I, I have a, I think I had one on, I can.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, I can, what?
Oh, that'd be helpful.
So the document says School Board Operations Audit Committee. The president of the Anchorage School Board will establish a School Board Operations Audit Committee to oversee audits of ASC departments and operations. The school board will approve departments and operations to be conducted each year. We get each reviews, or to be audited each year. The committee shall work with the superintendent to develop the, of the audits and work with the Council of Great City Schools to obtain auditors from other Council of Great Cities, Great City School members. Auditors' findings and recommendations will be provided to the Operations Audit Committee. The members of the Operations Audit Committee and auditors will present the final report to the school board.
Uh, Member Higgins, did you want to speak to this?
Looks like he just walked away. Member Higgins?
I don't know, Harry, do you know what he wanted you to talk about?
I do.
If you'd like to have four, talk about it, we'll get.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, you can come on. Oh, thank you very much.
Good morning, and thank you so much for allowing me to, um, address you this morning. My name is Harry Drummond. I was elected three times to the Anchorage School Board, and then, uh, two terms on the Anchorage Assembly. And most recently, I served ten years in the Alaska State House. I was a member of the House Education Committee for all ten years and served as chair or co-chair for my last six years. I am here to speak out in favor of re-establishing the board's audit committee. I believe it is critical for the benefit of all students and the public to, and to fulfill your obligation as a board. I served with Mr. Higgins's wife Patty Higgins on this board in nineteen ninety-four through nineteen ninety-six, so I have known Pat for a very long time. And when he approached me on this issue, I was frankly shocked that ASC was not doing regular operational audits. As you know, you're responsible for the. As you know, you're responsible for the operation of the second largest public entity in the state of Alaska, serving over forty thousand students and their families and employing thousands of professional and caring teachers and staff. You are responsible for ninety facilities and the most square footage of buildings and real estate in Alaska. In my nine years on board, from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and three, ASD grew from serving forty thousand students to just under fifty thousand, from majority compersion to more than twenty million students in that nine years. We built dozens of new schools and regularly slashed twenty-five million dollars or more from our annual budgets. And twenty-five million was a lot in those days compared to today's values. As you know, you are responsible for being the voice of the public, providing direction to the administration and holding the administration accountable. This comes directly from the National School Boards Association. Audits utilizing the Council of Great City Schools are very inexpensive and provide outstanding assessments and recommendations. You get true subject matter, experts from the largest school districts in the country. They cost you just for travel. Read the past audits if you're in doubt. Great City Schools auditors work with the administration and they address issues involving department operations and educational opportunities. ASD is way past due for, for a comprehensive curriculum, for example. During my time here, we reviewed curriculum at a minimum every five to seven years. There was always a curriculum review going on. This is a clear opportunity that contributes to improving educational outcome for our students as well as confidence in the public that you are doing your very best in this time of fiscal uncertainty to make every dollar count. The board and the administration work together in the audit process. It's quite objective and much better for the board to use a third party. In my day, we used the municipality's internal auditor for many of these audits. I don't know what the relationship with the school district is with the municipality at this point, and that might not be an option. But Great City Schools didn't even enter the picture until very late in my term. And it sounds like they're an excellent resource for which you already pay membership. I know other former board members feel strongly about this issue, and if you want me to, if you want to, if you want to meet with them, please let me know. But I think this should be a simple decision. Thanks again for the opportunity to address you. And by the way, speaking of agendas, I was concerned about just showing up at this meeting and search for the agenda to see if there was an opportunity for public comment. Board docs had nothing but an empty space under the governance committee and no agenda link for August third. Chair Holloman did send me a link that worked this morning, so thank you for that. I strongly suggest that you look at the ease of the public's access to your meetings and processes in your website. I am very experienced at looking things up in, in websites, particularly for school boards, and it's become much more difficult to find so on ASD's website in the last ten years. So again, thanks for the opportunity to address.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
And I will say that finding a business, it's not a super it is a multi-step process and the button for the agendas is usually off the screen at the bottom. You have to actually go to that meeting and then scroll and then even the button to see the agenda. So it's
And it's not very mobile friendly. That's, that's part of the problem.
I think it's not.
I was not, I was not at a large enough screen to, to, to see that part.
Yeah, but it's fair.
Other comments, Member Lessens?
Yeah, I wanted to speak to the fact, for the record, that the finance committee does approve a number of audits every year. You know, I happen to have with me the internal audit report from February of student nutrition, warehouse inventory controls. I believe that we're doing a P card audit, right? You know?
Yeah, two or three.
And we're wrapping up our fixed assets.
Fixed assets. There was a warehouse audit, student nutrition. So there are series of audits that have already occurred and are occurring
And those were through the municipal circuit.
Through the municipality. So that's separate from the council doing audits.
Right.
I could just add that in addition to those audits, management regularly does third-party audits. So for example, my first six months, we did audit of our town services that like some of the shoes that we talked about. We've done our own internal financial review from third-party. We did a transportation audit, as we famously have talked about over a couple of months. We did equity audit that we discussed numerous times. And a couple of months ago, we did reach out to Great Heart to discover what types of options are there for us to explore, additional audits into human resources function and others. So I think really the conversation is less about whether the district should do audits or not do audits. Certainly, I think the bigger governance question is as to what audit should we be doing, if we should decide.
And then how those things are made available.
How they're made available.
I think those are really
I will say from a long time, like over a decade ago, this, this board had a document listed all the audits. And I want to say that we're over a hundred. That were done periodically. Obviously, they were not done every year, but every so many years. And, and I recall the audit committee, it did consolidate what was being looked at and kind of provided an easy go-to source to see what was being reviewed and what the outcome was. And that, that might be what we need to do regardless of whether the committee is established or not. We don't necessarily have to do a separate process that the administration's already done. But we need to know that the administration did, and ideally, so the outcome results. You know, we, we don't get into changing the P card regulations or training or anything. But I think it's a marvelous thing when we see the results of that audit and just understand what's been changed and what's being looked at. When we talk to members of the public, it's a really great thing to be able to say, yeah, we actually have people that look at that. This is what they're calling, this is what fits. Is that what it's about? So but the, the question for us is, do we establish a separate committee? Is it something different question?
Yeah, yeah. So, and I just wanted to get back on what Member Lessens has indicated. I mean, we, we are doing audits. We're not, we may not be doing them the way some of us would like to see them done, but to say we're not doing audits is not, is, is not a fair representation of the work at board. I do, you know, I think the finance, how we are working it now on the finance, I think for me, that's a perfect fit. We have access, we have control, we have input, we get the final report back, we get to ask questions. And, and I guess I don't want to see the board take, and I do agree that we work in collaboration with superintendent. During the retreat, we had a brief conversation about audits and, and I can't remember now if it was a sidebar conversation with, with Member Higgins and Superintendent. But we did have a brief conversation and, and, because we did ask Mr. Hart to talk a little bit about, you know, what, you know, how, how that process works and what was available. Superintendent was very open to that. So I, I guess establishing another committee, I don't know that we need to do that. I just think we need to focus on the work and, and fitting it in within the structure that we already have. But we certainly are doing audits. I, 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 I don't know how. Yeah. So and if there's a better way to do it, I just, I don't know that I can serve on another committee. I think the, the way that we have our work divided right now between finance, governance and communication, I mean, we find out what, I think that works for us. And if we want to, I mean, I guess if, if the board wants to establish another committee, then we would change our policy to do that. Or we could, if, if we need a, a hot committee, but I think the way we are working and working with the administration through our finance, to me, that, that works, but maybe apparently it's not working for everybody.
Member Higgins has returned with his hand up.
Member Higgins?
He's on me.
You're muted.
We can't hear you, Pat.
I can hear you now.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Are you talking? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
You're on the board.
Yeah, I, I just, just a couple of comments here. I'm not saying governance couldn't do an audit committee's job, but it isn't. And right now, what we've got is finance audits are entirely separate. And for finance to be involved in controlling the audit of, of special ed, curriculum, purchasing, food service, anything else we have out there. One time, the, 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 the boards wanted to have an audit every three months because it just gave you maybe three years for different departments. I'm, we have a choice right now. If we do have issues, let's look into it and get an objective review. And an objective review means a third party, and you get it very cheap through the Council of Great City Schools. The alternative, if I've got concerns and I had, had some questions, do I go then to the, to the to the ombudsman with the municipality, make it public, go about that? I, I don't want that type of politics. I want a third party to come in, look what we can do. They objectively look at things and do it. It, it may or may not be appropriate to be for the board, for the, for the administration to govern what comes out or what doesn't come out of the audit. We're not running the audit. The audit would be done by the Council of Great City Schools. They would be working closely with the administration, not the board. But, but having that third party to me is absolutely critical. It has done a lot of things that would not have gotten done without that. The purchasing audit, when I was the chair, the audit never would have been done by that administration, and it was a big outcome. I'm more confident right now with the current administration, but the process here that has been in this is a big issue to me.
Would add, I, I do see the problem when the audits are under the finance committee. There's sort of an assumption that you're talking about a financial audit and the audits that Mr. Member Higgins is talking about are much broader than that. The same word used in a really different way. And I guess I just wanted to say that. Other comments, questions? My, my intent is that what we will do is add this to the agenda as an item. Where we will actually take a vote on it. To follow my understanding of the Open Meetings Act, this introduces it to the committee, gives the administration time to fully react and be prepared at the next meeting. And it will be on the agenda and we will take action on it.
And with someone who has a oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
I also want to say that this kind of goes to former member Drummond's, the information that no one can find isn't really information. If the administration's able to task someone to work with drawing up a master list of audits and we're able to place that in a position where at least the board and the public can actually see it, reference it, be able to see the results, that's not information that shouldn't necessarily be on the public. I, I think that would be helpful for all of us because there there are times where you have this, an idea occurs to you and you don't know where to look to find an answer to it. I sent an email to the superintendent and it generally gets answered really quick. But a list like that would, I think, inspire some confidence from the public, knowing that we do review all of these things. We are looking for changes. We are looking to optimize things all the time. And it happens on something of a schedule. So
So you mean in addition to what we already have?
Right. If I wanted to find all the audits, I
Type in audit, takes you to audit.
I'll go pick one.
Yeah, but we can and it's on the city website as well.
Awesome. So then they already
And then, yeah, but there's, it's like our math program. I mean, they're, they're, they're there, but we might be able to do a better job of making them accessible. And they're also on the menu site. For those eyes.
So we will visit this formally in our next meeting. Any other comments or questions today? Seeing none. Is there any other new business for today? Seeing none.
Who's buying much? No, I'm just
I would happily entertain a motion to adjourn.
You two adjourn? Second?
We are adjourned.
I'm going to send a number code
Oh, yeah.
And one eight room.
Hi, that meeting, thank you.
Let me, let me say this, this whole thing. You are responsible for getting the job done, right?
We're still, I'm starting everything and saying, yeah.
Dr. Littich.
All right.
So yes, okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's Thursday, August third. Just afternoon is the meeting of the first finance committee of FY twenty-four. And we have a number of visitors here today, so I'm just going to start at my right and have you introduce yourself real quick.
Well, I'm at the Institute of Social Research.
Kelly Lessens at Treasury.
Andy Holloman, board member of the Department of Funds.
Will Wilson, board member for Diane Gersberg, Director of Iser.
Andy Ratliff, CFO.
Derek Branson, President.
Dana, Institute of Social Economic Research, University of Alaska. Dana.
Katie Parrott, Senior Director for Management and Budget.
Margot Bellamy, Support.
Mark Foster, Pfizer, Iser.
Corey Heskey, Teacher, Anchorage Education Association.
Laura Cokerland, Senior Director of Finance.
Jenny Keats, Senior Director of Government Support.
Nikki Colley, Director of Federal Programs.
Welcome.
Thank you all for taking time to be here today. I really appreciate that. I wanted to spend the first
I wanted to spend the first 20 minutes or so with Team Icer. You guys have a lot of really important research and value your time and insight. And you shared some slides with Ms. Foster and I'll let you maybe talk about the scope of your research. If you have some questions for TVSC.
Okay.
I just try and and then also if anyone needs an agenda, they're right there.
I'm sorry.
The Icer study.
That's a a review that just came out with the data that sort of preempted the work that we're doing and sharing today. So it's they sort of
That's a tip. Oh, it is. It is posted to the agenda. It's not this, but it is posted.
So we've been here before to share this particular project. And what I can do is give a quick overview of it, since I know there's some new faces here, and then get into some of the preliminary quantitative findings that we have that Matt has sort of uncovered and that we find very, very curious and we're trying to interpret. So I've introduced myself and Matt. And on the next slide, we sort of give an overview of the project. The project is called Sufficient Compensation for Retention Equity. It's a National Science Foundation funded project. And we're actually doing a statewide study, building off some of the work that we did in the salary and tenure study, the paper that was just distributed. And we're really trying to understand, looking at the teacher, our state's ability to attract and retain educators. We're wanting to really understand the relationship between working condition and compensation in driving those teacher decisions to take a job and stay in the job long term. Since it is funded at the National Science Foundation, a particular interest is STEM educators. But we're also interested in whether or not STEM educators look very different from teachers who are in other subjects. So we're sort of as a de facto looking at the whole teacher workforce, which is useful to the state outside of the NSF's interest in STEM teachers in particular. And most of all, we're focused on high need schools that are able to retain STEM educators and attract STEM educators and what they're doing and how that what what factors promote their success. So that's sort of an overview of the project. And the next slide just kind of shows our work plan. We started with quantitative analysis, which we spent a whole lot of time in the administrative processes of getting access to data, joining data sets. We also spent a lot of time compiling collective bargaining agreements for all of the K4 school districts in the state over the last 10 years, making sure that we were representing all of the forms of compensations the teacher gets, salary, but also benefit packages. We work with lots of great partners who we appreciate a tremendous amount. We're able to join all of these data sets, do some quantitative analysis with teacher employment records. And now we're in the process of interpreting those preliminary quantitative findings. Ultimately, we'll follow up with some qualitative case studies of some of these schools that are retaining teachers better than we our models suggest they should, try and figure out what's going on there and hopefully improve our models of what we learn as a qualitative component. But right now, we're looking at these quantitative numbers, finding some interesting patterns, and that's what we're hoping to share with you today. Your impressions, why are we finding what we're finding? So I think in the next slide. Matt, do you want to?
Okay, well. Yeah, I guess I thought you'd look at, I'd be happy to. So we're our first step is to try to like develop a quantitative model to predict turnout. And and identify what really matters. Once you figure out it's like control for all that noise, create a lot of get through, then what is there about Title I, STEM teachers, Title I being a marker for high need school? And the individual schools that that sort of stand out. And first, the short answer is, I guess STEM teachers, you know, they look like, at least in Anchorage area, they look like other teachers. So it's not really any difference. So it's it works fine, like with all teachers. And and we look at, so what we did really throughout the quantitative analysis, if you did want to use, it's like a survival analysis. So this really tells you features like how long to survive, how long to survive, the school's teacher. This is why they do some, like they were saying, so. And and we're like, what matters? Well, salary matters. The obvious teacher demographics matter. The size of the school, like, you know, bigger school, which is also like a level. And so you can't really tell the difference. Number of students in school, level, certainly. Now, obviously matters. But biggest driver is so within Anchorage, you know, all of Anchorage, in terms of statistics is certainly a part of it. Schools have report the number of students, pretty much some of these such as this. And it's it's really dominating the difference in school. It's like the swamp and everything else wants to control for the teacher practices. So I'd like to like spend a little bit, I kind of talk a little bit more about that. So we'll go to the next slide. So this is the distribution. So once the school is eligible, I I I asked Mark Foster, he's Paris, but he was a supervisor, so he knows. And 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 you confirm that, well, you get, you report your free reduced lunches and the school is eligible for your targeted assistance programs or a school-wide program. And and then the there, there's sort of a choice is whether you, a targeted assistance program, you actually implement one. And if you're eligible for a school-wide program, you could have targeted assistance or a school-wide program or no program too. So there's choices in that. The choices turn out to make a big difference. That's going to the next slide. You know, you'll see that there's a lot of this differences there. But here's the like, sort of the the quantitative assessment of how much of a difference it makes. So the the bars are, they represent sort of the the excess probability of a teacher will leave. Like, how much does this add to the likelihood that a teacher will leave? So a negative effect means it actually makes it more likely to stay. And obviously, salary, it showed, you know, 10% salary, it's actually, say, it's like 6% longer that they'll stay there. So it does matter, but you see, it's and it's about equal in magnitude to 10% more students getting a free lunch, sort of the same magnitude. But the reduced price lunch is much more you know, much more conducive to turnover. And if you look at the the program, the targeted assistance category seems to be doing pretty a good job of driving teachers away. And I, you know, that's whereas the school-wide program is still at school, you see, is relatively immodest, affects turnover. So, you know, there's a lot more to be saying here. And you see, I put some airbrushes on there to show the night, but there's really a significant, big significant difference, like twice as much, twice as a teacher and a targeted system eligible for a targeted assistance program, even if it's for school-wide program, you're like twice as likely to leave the end of the year. So their their survival is half, essentially. And that's a big deal. So that's basically, you know, as far as I want to go, but just ask more about, well, this is such a big deal. I need to, we need to know more about how the targeted, you know, how the Title I programs are decided, how to negotiate, you know, how it works and and what we need to find out when we go to this meeting. We should be working at schools and going in there and talking to people about about this. So thanks. That's that business of all.
I'm kind of wondering which schools like represent that. So like Muldoon would be probably full reduced or full, everybody gets free or a lunch. What's a targeted program?
Well, I also, I should add that it does change from year to year. It's not always the same.
Right, I was saying, it kind of rotates through, so is that?
In 2020, I, you know, I didn't mention 2020, everything, you know, the total of everything. So that's sort of not counting your targeted.
Any British school district, we're using the school-wide Title Plan instead of targeted. And that's it, so we're as long as I know.
Okay, I was just wondering. Well, but there are a lot of schools that are recruiting targeted assistance, so. No, they're not. There are some in Massou, but they're mostly in Anchorage.
What you target it.
So there's two models that you can choose from, from the state level. And it's either having a school-wide program and deciding at a certain cut. 75 is the minimum, but we use 68% free reduced lunch right now is our pivot point. And so every year you determine the cut line of what percentage of kids qualify for free and reduced lunch. And all of those schools become eligible as under the school-wide. So you can't do a mixed plan. You can't do some school-wide eligible and some targeted. I don't know enough about targeted right now, but basically the dollars would follow every student that qualifies. So every school would get a certain per pupil allocation. Some schools would get a lot and some schools would get very little. And they would still have to follow requirements and use those, use those dollars to support resources, resources for those specific.
Okay, well, thanks. Can we follow up on this actually? You know, like around, maybe not necessarily right away, but because the data is what's reported to be, that it may not be same as what you, you know, what you're actually doing, and that's important to go to.
Technical question, a teacher that moves from one building to another, would that be turnover? Or is it just when they leave a profession from targeting? So that's what they leave is they move from school to another school. That's, that's, this is a school.
Sometimes I hear, so they stay in the, in the teaching profession, the last sentence, do they stay in the district? Do they stay in the school? So here are the unit of analysis as to where they stay in the job.
Yeah, run a survival analysis. You have to decide, okay, what is a, what's a failure? In this case, a failure is not reported for work in the same school on the next year.
So
So this turn over is much more.
Right, so I have a question on because being married to a teacher, it's not optional always to stay in the school. So that's one of the issues with using school to school turnover is it's not always here.
Yeah, we we look at, you know, we tried to do what we could to determine that and it's not always possible. There are some schools that actually close. And and then we, then we don't count that. And, you know, if 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 the number of teachers in the school goes down, we are adjusting for that. So we're trying to, of course, we think that it's individual teachers.
So have you run the same, I'm sorry. It's like, because, and I'm sorry, because we haven't, we haven't talked about this internally because I'm being a director now. How do you run the same analysis then, just for staying or leaving the district in the profession? Or they stay with a teacher?
No, we, well, yeah, I mean, what did that, but that was more the focus of the study.
Right.
Their, their, it's very different.
Because I just know that so many teachers will get moved involuntarily because of enrollment changing or simply to, you know, I'm married to a science teacher. Those are in high man, so there are times where they'll get moved for reasons that have to do within the needs of the average school.
Well, I'd just say, the needs too far, but it's really important to control for experience and tenure makes a big difference. The tenure teacher is much less likely, you know, controlling for that. So we're controlling for a lot of stuff, but we can't control it at all.
Something that kind of jumped in mind, because I'm trying to think why lunches would make such a difference. Or for a lot of our Title I schools, particularly during COVID, but even another time, they would also, they had free lunch. They would have free breakfast in the classroom. And my guess is that made a number of teachers move. And I want to say that as a teacher, you have a certain amount of time where you get to teach. And then you have a certain, a certain amount of time where you have to do other things. Paperwork, discipline issues. And if you're serving meals in your classroom, a lot of cleanup and hassle. I mean, it it just the bunch, you know, like the fact that students are eating there can be okay in the general way, but it's it's non-teaching work. It's not particularly pleasant, especially in fact, we've used our study staff severely. Even if you're not serving any food, your classroom is not as clean as it used to be, unless you decide to clean it yourself. And I, I don't know how you could incorporate this. It would take so many one-on-one interviews. But I can see where if I was a teacher in a school that served a breakfast and a lunch in my classroom.
And a snack.
And snack. And I could move to a school that didn't have that. You know, and it might be a combination of the fact it's closer to my house, or I know a couple of people in staff, plays, et cetera, et cetera. But it would be one more reason I would think about moving to a different location.
Policy perspective, thinking about the work of the Wellness Committee, it's a, it is better for students to have breakfast after the bell. And you could make that policy district-wide and get rid of that disincentive for teacher ability. So we're going to make it count for everyone, but at least kids are going to have a chance to have breakfast.
Right. Yeah, I'm not in any way or
So I'm wondering if it's possible that when you serve breakfast, the teacher, the students are more likely to actually show up. After tears, it's lower and they're maybe more likely to be home. As well, whether that may be sort of counter that, counter.
There are a lot of analysis to it. I'm I'm not saying it's a bad policy that we that we serve the meals in classrooms, but when when teachers as individuals are making that decision. You know, so serving meals is not what any of us want, just the reward. It just, it just changes things. I mean, I think it's good for kids, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. But I, when I open the numbers, I'm always trying to figure out what what is the root behind this one bar being so big and this other bar being so small? And and it could be in the case that if that is the fact, you know, I'm just guessing, but additional staff to compensate for the fact that we're doing that in certain buildings would help. I know particularly during COVID, it was an issue for a lot of teachers that it just added one and it didn't help anything. With their workload, I think it just meant more events.
Yeah.
Question, what about reduced price lunch versus being
The administration, sort of share what the difference would be, reuse, reduce.
How is it actually inside the school? Yeah. How do you pay? How do you pay students?
Uh, they, usually parents can, they can, uh, I'm not
Supposed to go online now.
It's all online now. You have to go Q. You sign in and you pay, I guess how we pay, we pay for lunches online.
I would say that the information about
Or you could send a check. You could send a check in to the office as well.
We would know which schools do have in classroom the versus which schools have students that are in the camp area. Because I get, you know.
Be married in a school, a teacher to teacher.
Well, I mean, you do have some in classrooms or you don't. Because I'm thinking, again, as a teacher, whether or not kids are paying for the lunch or not, doesn't matter. Where they eat it. And and I say this to someone that used to like instantly, they took their classroom for lunch. But where they eat it might have a, that might and it would be interesting though, if that data changed your arms.
I would, not not entirely knowing what's behind this, and having more faith in the administration's ability to analyze this my own. I would, not, not entirely knowing what's behind this and having more faith in the administration's ability to analyze this my own. I would throw it out there that there's a possibility that at a school where students are receiving reduced price lunch, it's possible that there are simply fewer resources available at a school level than at a school where their, where students are receiving a free lunch. Right? And so you have teachers who are finding themselves told to just do more with less than at a teach, than at a school where maybe additional resources are being deployed, um, and available. And the stress, I mean, your, your pizza here talks about sort of the hedonic compensation or maybe a penalty. And my guess is that there's a penalty at a receiving reduced price lunch that it's not there at the free, um, free school. I want to be, sorry.
I was just gonna say, and I go the way you're at a school that doesn't have a free lunch. Um, if any parent volunteer, if you're more likely to have people sell up, um, you're more likely to have, you'd say, give us money off classrooms. You know, easy to get grants to do things. Whether the district itself is providing these resources, if there are, we're so changed and.
But here in the, in the, if you think about the schools that have a real divergence of income, right? So talk about roommate, cause it's a lot I'm watching, um, day to day. And you have very wealthy families providing a lot of resources to a very small group of students. And another group of students with parents who are barely making it. And so there's very unequal distribution of the resources available to the teachers and a very unequal distribution of what teachers have to do in order to allow. I, I'm gonna guess the highly gifted teachers are not buying food and giving it to their children every day. And in my family, we're buying food and giving it to children in the classroom every day.
Um, I.
I could talk to you about that.
Yeah, yeah. We can give you a good case study.
I hate to nip this conversation in the bud, but I wanted to try, cause I do want to get to the items on our agenda. I feel like the store is going to always be open, but I did want to ask a question with respect to your paper, which raised my eyebrows. Um, it was on page twenty-four where it, um, where it states that Matsu four schools um, are able to achieve highly qualified teachers by paying less than mid-range, which would have to raise its salaries by about thirteen percent to reach a hundred percent threshold. Could you speak to that a little bit more? And is that, um, all of that, which were simply thinking about school, some of our schools?
This is an average, so it's obviously now that we have more chance, these are work, which within the state is considered more carefully. Like in serious terms, only some of the schools are, are, which is, here, which I don't see.
So.
So Matsu has a problem on schools too, but they have different challenges.
And a lower data from twenty fifteen, uh, sort of like in the decade prior. So I think we have a lot of the same trends and patterns now that I wouldn't focus too much on the number just the pattern. Well, given the age of the data, the base for the analysis.
Is there any way to update that to?
Yeah, well, sort of, we're working on that just.
Okay.
Yeah, I could also say that in Anchorage, like two of the schools that were actually bringing Anchorage sort of down. The schools on base that actually closed were part of that problem. So, yeah, it's, it's the same if you're doing that.
And I want to respect your time. The very last slide has my email and that's also, you can just Google us, our names are on here to go to ICER. Um, I think we've talked a lot of follow-up questions in a lot of different directions. Um, so what would be, we invite everybody to email us, call us, you know, we can connect. But what would you ask for a question with all of this large?
Well.
Yeah, we can invite you for an hour-long lunch session if it's planned or something like that.
Let's, um, we'll connect offline to figure out our next best step of staying in contact. I certainly hope that, you know, administration will be able to help answer questions and clarify, be in a follow-up. You're, you're the brains behind the operation. We'll be able to, um, to give that targeted response. So really appreciate everybody's time and your work and research. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Um, with that, you're welcome to stay.
You're welcome to stay.
And the next item on the agenda is FY twenty-three budget update.
Okay, so we'll go over where we're standing on our FY twenty-three closing out. We're still in the process of closing out FY twenty-three, so we still do have some adjusting entries to make. So this is, uh, should be a final presentation, of course. Uh, but just give you a, a mindset where we're at and then kind of go over some of the change we've made since, uh, we actually produced the initial projection in November and, um, kind of identify how much money we might have to carry over for future years. Um, so the first pay, the first section we're gonna go through is our revenue. Uh, the biggest changes you'll see here is our interest earnings continue to grow, uh, more about four million dollars over our initial projection. Um, which is good, you know, we operate on a mark-to-market approach where, you know, we were tied to the value of our investments. And a lot has actually been actual interest earnings since the Fed's increased the interest rates. Uh, our interest earnings have also, uh, increases along with that. The other one you'll see, the foundation funding under state revenue, about twenty-two million dollar variance there. Uh, most of that's due to the sixteen million in one-time funding that we got after we had approved the original budget. And a lot of the rest of it is either correspondence funding or, um, most of the rest of it's probably intensive needs funding above what we've actually projected to be given. So that's the biggest driver in state funding discrepancy. Um, and then federal impact is a little bit lower, Medicaid is a little lower. And then the other ones are pretty well closed, except for the emergency connectivity fund, which is reimbursements for the cost of some of our hardware through IT for Chromebooks and some of our Apple these devices. So we put that application through, we actually did receive that money and we should report it there. Uh, the next page is our expenditures. Very well in line with what we presented this last time, I believe in May. The biggest ones you'll see is the, um, a lot of unspent money within teachers assistants and certificated teachers and nurses, counselors, librarians, I guess, paraprofessionals, not teachers assistants, to change that, sorry. Um, and then you'll see like a overage in substitutes. That's really to cover those. And a lot of these other funds are the other types of classification employee. And then the benefits are medical course, that's mostly due to either unfilled positions, turnover and folks waiving that insurance. The thing I kind of want to address here is with our attrition rates, um, under the attrition in salaries and the benefits. Um, if you add in the total variance, the three point five million in salaries plus that attrition, then nine point nine million. Our actual attrition experience was about thirteen and a half million dollars in salaries and about twenty-six and a half million or so in benefits. So we realized about forty million dollars in unspent salary and benefit funds throughout the course of this year. Um, we projected almost about twenty-eight million, well under twenty-eight million for that. So this is something we're trying to watch. We increased it a little bit for the FY twenty-four budget, our attrition estimates, but not nearly up to forty million. So we're hoping by incentivizing some of these positions to get filled, we'll be able to bring that down. So a little hesitant to chase that number up to like a forty million dollar mark. Cause once you miss that mark, then you're gonna start overspending by, by the. Um, but that's something we'll watch, you know, hopefully, well, not really hopefully, cause the downside of this is we don't have the people in our building serving the students. But we do have financial savings by not doing it. So we'll be watching that in FY twenty-four to see if we have some, uh, money remaining. Those are the bigger variances we've had throughout the, since our last projection. Your utilities are still well under budget. And indirect cost has creeped up a little bit as we're starting to spend out a lot of that Easter money and these, some of these other grants that we've received. But really, turn over to the next page, you know, really what we want to get at is the very bottom of this. Um, this is where we show, the very bottom section of this is where we show the thirty million dollars we referenced in the board meeting yesterday's, yesterday? Tuesday.
Seems like yesterday, though.
So you'll see the thirty-two million dollars, that's when we reduced it from almost forty-five million dollars in the one-time funding. So we're reducing the amount to, that we need to apply from our savings. And that leaves about thirty million dollars. It would be down to our eight percent board minimum. So we'll carry that forward. Our budget for FY twenty-four would then be balanced and then we'll have, you know, potentially thirty million dollars, all things being equal, to carry into FY twenty-five to offset that deficit. Um, a lot of things can change, of course, with FY twenty-five, you know, we have a lot of unsold contracts and we don't know what our enrollment's gonna be. Those are the biggest drivers that will affect the amount of money that we have in FY twenty-four or variance between our expenditures and revenue there.
But this thirty million dollar figure is what ASC is anticipating rolling over to FY twenty-five. And bringing that ninety-five million dollars structural deficit down to sixty-five.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and we have that savings because of the sheer volume of under positions.
Yes, mo- mostly. There's some other factors too. Um, then the next page is actually put together a summary that will show what we've done, you know, how our projections, uh, went over the last, since, uh, we started this, we used data from our original projections, it's data from towards the end of November. Um, so the variance column on the far right is what our current, our current projection minus what our original projection was. So really wanted to show you kind of the broad categories of where we saw those savings kind of increase throughout the course of the year. When we do our original projection in November, December time frame, we're fairly conservative on what we're putting in there. A lot of it's either, you know, worst-case scenario, and some things happen throughout the year. But by and large, you know, we're gonna be conservative on those estimates, cause when we're developing our budget and saying we have money in our savings to spend, we don't want to end the end of the year and say, well, about that money we had to spend and now we don't have it. So fairly conservative and you can see over time that it does grow. Um, but the biggest things are interest earnings. That one was hard to project as that really started towards the last half of the years. The Fed started increasing that rate. We really did start increasing the amount of our interest earnings we had. So that's about three point eight million. The state revenue, once they finalized their, our intensive needs counts, it jumped up by about a little over three million. And then we got a little bit more in the impact day than the emergency connectivity money than what we were expect, we were originally expecting in November, December. Um, so about eight point eight million dollars in additional revenue since then. And for the expenditures, uh, our salaries lowered by about two point two million. Uh, all of that was due to certificated staff. Uh, we got additional grants for nurses from the state, which paid for some of the duties they were doing. Essentially, it's the same people in the building, just a different funding source. Um, as the state tries to spend out their remaining stimulus money as well. So that brought that down. Um, our accrued, our accrued leave and usage also went down by a little bit. Um, our substitute costs continued to go up as we couldn't fill some of those positions we had hoped to fill back in November. And then, uh, our paraprofessional and clerical's went down as well as we couldn't, again, couldn't continue to fill those positions as we go. On the benefit side, about two point six million. Most of that was workers' comp. Uh, we didn't expend as much workers' comp as we had expected. Um, we're kind of, we usually generally kind of worst-case scenario of that as well. But as we had fewer claims throughout the year, we didn't spend that money as we're self-insured for workers' comp. Unemployment's the same way, but we didn't have, um, the actual, the total cost of that's not nearly as much, but it did go down. Um, and then the fringe benefits associated with the drop in the overall salaries not being as much as we had expected. So that's why the salaries and benefits go down. Utilities, you know, we don't know what the winter's gonna be like when we're projecting in November. So we're fairly conservative when we do that. And so as we got a little bit warmer winter, but a lot more snow, our utilities were less than expected.
Can I interrupt you?
Of course.
I did see a question, uh, from.
Any of the, the workers' comp, do you think that's because we're doing a better job not getting hurt or because that's the, like, loss and stuff?
I think it's probably a better job not get, having insignificant injuries. Um, those can turn around pretty quick. You get a couple of big claims, you know, that's million dollars pretty quick. Uh, so the loss in staffing also is a loss in how much we accrue in our workers' comp fund to pay for it too. So as we have fewer, less staff, we have less money going in to pay the claims, but we also have fewer claims. So overall, we've had the last few years or several years, we've had a trend of lower claims only accrued. For FY twenty-four, we have adjusted our workers' comp rates downward quite a bit, uh, reduced the budget by a million and a half, two million, I think. Just because we've had this trend of, um, accruing more into our workers' comp fund than we have expenses paid out. So we do, we do wanna, we have, we have addressed that. We'll see how it shakes out in FY twenty-four. But again, big claims and any big claims in any year is gonna significantly ease away how much money we have there.
Great.
Other services unallocated money, that's the money that was, most of that's charter school money. Some of that went, acquired and transferred it out to pay for some of their capital improvements. And then they just had some unjust paid costs or, or used more of it than what they had expected. The more indirect costs, the indirect costs is included in those other services as well. So that's as we recovered more indirect costs from the grants that changed that number. And then our instructional contracted services actually kind of offset that and increased. But, um, I think a lot of that was more for, we had more contracts for vacant staff, particularly like related services. And then in correspondence, you know, our corresponding schools, a lot of those started going through more of their reimbursements towards the end of the year. Trying to spin that money out. So as that got spent out, that's where that comes out, where they're paid for, uh, class fees and so. So that's some of the, and that would have, that would also have an effect on the unallocated. If it's a correspondent service school, it's pulling money out of their unallocated and putting it into their contracted services for instruction. It's just kind of, there's a relationship there. Uh, our supplies were different. Most of that's just unspent teaching, it's by an expendable equipment. And that's, it wasn't, didn't seem to be indicative across, I mean, it, it was pretty well across all different, uh, schools, departments, elementary, secondary, you know, it was across the board. There was quite a bit of unspent supply and equipment money that was left to the neighbors here. Um, then the last piece of it was the transfers to other funds. We had a decrease in our projected amount that we are gonna put into the health insurance fund as we had some remaining extra money to cover that. And then there was a increase in the amount of food service with having to pay for the shelf-stable meals as well as some unpaid meal balances. So, um, and then our capital projects increased as we funded a PDC project. It was originally gonna be paid out of some of those money, but ended up, the, due to the contracting issues with the federal government, ended up paying for that out of the general fund instead. I think, I believe that was like one point six million and that was, uh, that was on a board memo sometime in the last fall. So overall, you know, we added about eighteen million into that, um, since November. Uh, plus the twelve mil, twelve and a half million that we saved from the state one-time funding. That's where you get to about that thirty million dollars that we're gonna carry forward. So as we're talking to folks and understand how that money, kind of important to understand how that money gets, the, those savings are achieved. Um, unfortunately, it's due to, a lot of it's due to not having folks in our classrooms, so. Any questions on our FY twenty-three projections?
Sorry, I just, I wanted to clarify. So the FY twenty-three one-time funds that we're gonna carry forward, which is a thirty-two million dollar figure here, that is, um, that is not the variance plus savings from FY twenty-four one-time funds. that is not the variance plus savings from FY twenty-four one-time funds?
Well, we are able to reduce our reliance on our savings, uh, so that's what, that's what brought it down to the thirty-two point four million versus the original forty-five million.
Okay.
So it's kind of crossing fiscal years and how you look at the money, but it's all, but at the end of the day, the thirty million is what we expect to have to be able to put towards FY twenty-five, all things being equal.
Um, I see member Jacob's hand online.
Yeah, thank you, madam chair, um, question for Mr. Raloff, how much of the, the eighteen million is one-time federal funds?
Um, this is all just general fund at this point. We're still going through our one-time federal funds to see what we might have left over for FY, from FY twenty-three, so we're, um, we'll get that number to you guys once we close that out, and Katie might have an indication of when that might be, but this does not include the, the federal.
It does not.
But we'll get an update on, on, on spent federal funds.
Right.
Sometime.
Yeah.
Sure. Great.
Yes, I have a random question, connected, but not really. Uh, I just want to make sure I answered a question I got recently correct. And the question had to do with military, mil, funding for a military child?
The federal impacted?
Is that the impact day? Okay.
Okay, great, we've got ten or twelve minutes remaining. Um, maybe we can pivot to FY, we're going through three years, we are timed.
I know, hey.
We're going to do FY twenty-four, budget revisions, uh, any questions, um, following Tuesday's work session? Well, I thought we had a good session. It, you know, there, I have, I prepared for that meeting by writing in a lot of questions. Um, but really, a lot of them were answered over the course of that presentation, so I really appreciate it. Um, it was, it was really comprehensive. Um, you know, I just want to share, um, my general dispeace, uh, for feeling that we need to backfill, I'm feeling, knowing that we need to backfill, uh, the, the budget for student nutrition. Um, because we weren't able to staff things properly. And I was trying to understand the scope of that, and so I was looking back through our FY twenty-three budget, and the best I can come up with is that we're paying frontline kitchen staff around three and a half million dollars across elementary and secondary. Um, and now we're going to be throwing another four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, it just, it's a big proportion that hindsight is always twenty-twenty, you know, had we invested that four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars into, I don't know, I don't know how you would convert that to a hourly wage, but that might have, you know, prevented kids from eating what is it, member Jacob, you know, ASC MREs. Um, and I, I don't want to be blase, but I just, um, it's really unfortunate, and then when you think about, um, and there's revenue that ASC receives, a lot of revenue from those federal reimbursements. I mean, so I think it's a really, I think we need to be very strategic in how we, and I know that the staff is working very hard to place challenging positions. But I guess if we need real money in that direction, I'd rather throw it in at the start of the year than at the end, at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Because that's just my, my piece, I want to say.
I think we shared that sentiment, too, if you know what's that.
Um, so it's,
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to take a step of action on par pressure, for example.
Right.
Um, because we would get in that position again, where if you don't invest on front end, you're acting, you have all this ready. Um, for student nutrition, that was not going to be acted with urgency, but not as for.
I mean, I think investing on the front end of everything, starting with.
But I got to tell you, though, I, I mean, I would rather children have something to eat.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, it may not be hot, it may not be warm, I would rather they eat. And so, i- it is a quiet mind, but I hear what you're saying, and, and, um, you know, I, you know, I, the expectation that our kids have a hot lunch every single day, every kid who wants a hot lunch, have a hot lunch. I mean, I, I would love to have that happen, but the reality is, it, we just, I don't know where the staff time comes from to man all of our kitchen staff. So we're going to have to be creative, and we're going to have to push it, so I, I don't disagree, it's just, it's crazy, it, it.
We might be starting this year in a better position than we did last year.
That's true.
Absolutely, I mean, rather than nineteen vacancies, we're down to a handful. Um, and so I think that that speaks, you know,
Yeah.
directly to a lot of important work that has taken place. So I look forward to not having this conversation in about four months.
We should do that, too.
Yeah, oh, but, okay, so we're going to seven minutes, uh, six or seven minutes, um, maybe on FY twenty-five. I mean, unless there are other board members with FY twenty-four questions.
Your question about, you had another question, um, about the revisions, I'm just going to assume that you got it, you got that question.
I, I think that a lot of my questions were in.
Sure, okay.
Um, yeah.
Cool, because it'll be on consent, if we, we've not.
Right.
And we have another discussion, but.
Um, so let's maybe pivot to this year, FY twenty-five. You gave us a glimpse, or you gave us a glimpse of nine town halls and.
That was actually last year's calendar, so, yeah, so we just kind of wanted to show you how we finished out last year. Legislative session ended, and, you know, now we're trying to make the adjustments based on that past legislative session. So the nine town halls, those were, were the school closures, mostly, so. Um, we, I don't think we have a set plan of what we're going to do for the FY twenty-five budget development. Um, but hopefully it's not nine town halls of school closures.
Right.
So I, I guess, I, I guess I.
And we should have been, I should have been more clear when I went back through the slide, it didn't have a year on it, so.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll need nine, but, I mean, we'll, we have, we also, keep in mind, though, we, we will be doing our uh, our goals and guardrails as well, that's a whole nother set of public meetings.
Okay.
Um, so starting with the budget development timeline goes, um, however the board wants to work, and you know, last year we went through about every two weeks giving you a new piece of bad news.
Right.
You know, it really took the focus off of academics, frankly.
Right.
Um, so if we wanted to just wait till kind of later in the budget development, you know, later in September, October, here's kind of a refresher, we went through, there's nothing really changed that much from the previous, you know, several sessions that we went through. And the board hasn't changed either, so, same making of the board, same ideas we have, areas we can cut from. Uh, it might just be that we do a refresher and then start doing our town hall, our town halls or community, community meetings, whatever, however we want to do it this year.
So you do anticipate having community?
We always have some community engagement, yeah.
Over the course of the fall?
Yeah, because we have to start developing our budget December, January, so typically we have those surveys go out, um, October, November.
So you anticipate soliciting public input on sort of financial priorities or choices?
Yeah, I would assume we'd do that again, we've done that every year.
Okay.
As we align with what's going to change, I mean, what that changes.
Right.
Okay, right, last year we're talking about specific programs, for example, if that's happening, engaging with a specific program or whatever it is, we haven't provided that kind of support, that's what we're recommending to change some structures.
I see, yes, member Jacob's hand up.
Yeah, thank you, madam chair, um, just an observation and then, um, perspective, which administration can consider. Um, having attended the school start time town halls, I think that might be a, a potential model for, um, how we interact and engage and solicit community input, I think where we had kind of regional town halls, um, that worked fairly well, and I, I don't think I had a single complaint about there being inadequate access because they were all streamed online. Um, so wanted to add that feedback to the conversation. Uh, the, the other thing, and you know, as we, we talk about kind of the content and the style, um, last year we talked about, and I think, you know, Mr. Anderson said in jest, you can't develop two budget booklets. I, I feel like as we, as we developed the content for these town halls, there does need to be an element of the fact that there's so much uncertainty and discussing the various forks in the road that, that we've touched on in our work sessions. Um, and being transparent with the public in that, you know, if status quo changes, this is our reality, if um, there's a, you know, within the first few days of session reversal of, uh, the partial funding, uh, the partial veto of one-time funding, this is our reality. If our preferred increase to the BSA and inflation-proofing happens, this is our reality. And really driving home how funding impacts what happens in buildings. To me, there's value in that, and I hope, I mean, if I were a parent, that's what I would want to know and understand coming away from these town halls, not just um, what the reality looks like, but how that could change based on actions of the legislature. Um, just putting that out there, thank you.
Thank you, member Jacobs, I wanted to underscore, I think what you said is really important, and link it to what I heard Senator Tobin share when I was a fly on the wall at the AASE summer board meeting, I'm just an invited guest, um. It would be helpful to understand what the district would look like with an additional thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars per student. And, you know, I'm thinking back to my ninth grade literature class, I'd like to know what the best of times look like, I'd like to know what the worst of times look like. Given, you know, what we have to base our future predictions on, then it would be nice to know what, what that alternative pathway could entail. Because ultimately, sixty-five million dollars is six hundred and fifty positions. And I don't know how you have six hundred and fifty positions other than increasing people-to-teaching ratios by probably twelve. That's my ballpark, based on what you guys have shared previously. And that, to me, just blows my mind as a board member, as a parent, as a community member. So, you know, I wouldn't like, I wouldn't like losing six hundred and fifty jobs if I was a reloader, if I was a banker, if I was in a whole lot of other professions across Angler Bridge, so I think that this needs to be part of the conversation, I guess I would, I would like to hear more about what we could do, what that future would like, would look like with a robust, um, procurement of additional funding.
And I know, real quick, just a heads up, um, more or less, because it's not anything that we can, any business that we can do today, but um, just be aware that there is a push, and I think I've looked in, Kelly, Andy's looked in, Carl's looked in. Um, there is a push to create a valid initiative around class size. That blows my mind, but there are well-meaning people wanting to do some things that might not be the best for us. As, uh, meaning ASC, or, or Alaska, from, in my opinion, but that conversation is being had out there. Um, and so, I, we just need to pay attention. I was just looking haphazardly a couple of days ago, and then, uh, we did get an email from AASE, and I'm going to send that, I'll share it with the administration. Um, but that, 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 that's out there, and people are trying to help. We just got to be part of the conversation on what is helpful. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, um, with that, I'll put the motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Thank you. Our next meeting will be, uh, in a month, September. Thank you. Our next meeting will be in a month, September.
Keep the door open because it's hot.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure. Tell me when you're ready. We're ready. So I want to welcome everyone to our communications committee meeting. And I would like to take, oh, sorry, it's August third. Thank you. It's August third. I would like to take a moment to allow everybody to introduce themselves. If you can start with Andy and move around the table, then we'll go online.
And.
I'm Amanda Foster, executive assistant to the board.
Margo Bellamy, board member.
Jim Anderson, CRO.
Andy Raloff, CFO.
MJ Communications.
Dora Wilson and I am the communications chair.
Ray, Drew.
Carl is online, and then we also have Tony Riley joining us online. So Carl, go ahead and introduce yourself first if you want, or we can do it for you. Okay, Carl Jacobs, board member, is online. And actually, it works out perfectly because I wanted to introduce Tony Riley, who is the new communication, no, community engagement. What is her title?
She's the senior director of equity.
So.
Equity Engagement.
Tony, can you take a minute to introduce yourself, since you are?
Yes, hi, everyone. My name's Tony Riley. I'm the senior director of diversity, equity, inclusion, and community engagement.
That is helpful.
It is.
Hey, Tony, while we have you speaking, do you want to give your report about the backpack jam and anything else that your department has going on?
Absolutely. So we had our first all-district back-to-school backpack jam on Saturday, July twenty-second. And we were able to give out over three thousand backpacks, thanks to the support of the community. We had lots of donation and supply bins around town, and we are also supporting another school supply drive that is happening next week in the community with hugs and Lutheran services, and that's happening on Wednesday, August ninth at East High School from ten to six.
Awesome. Thank you. And.
Yeah.
Pivot to you, MJ, for communications.
Yeah, I was just thinking back off of Tony, so just kind of talk about what we've been doing in communications for back-to-school. Got, we launched our webpage and a soft launch a couple of weeks ago, and focus and aim is on your pathways. And then we added in digital. The following week, we got, we're trying out different digital packages week this year. We've got a hyper-focus on enrollment and school start times PLCs. So we've got some extra focus on digital as well as traditional. We have our billboards that are around on our school properties. You notice that we had our bus transportation, bus driver messaging support for our recruitment campaign that my team did some additional messaging for that and had billboards on our school locations. Apps popped up after Memorial Day to just kind of make sure that people are aware that we had that need going on for the start of the school year. And then last week or two weeks ago, the back-to-school billboards went up as well as radio and television. We did some sponsored content this year with KTUU and KYES that started this week. Again, focused on enrollment and registration as well as PLCs and school start times. We also have our traditional media messaging that has started as well. Bus transportation, as you saw, was one, and we did an update yesterday on where we are with full bus service, thanks to the hard work of Jim's team. And then we went in and did a round of security and safety messaging today. That would be on KTUU, KYES, as well as Alaska Public Media. And then we've got some others in the works as well for next week. In addition to that, we also have our new digital media producer who's been putting out videos for us. Bus transportation is a good example. We also have PLCs that went out last week as well. And then we've got a couple more in production that will be popping out with that. So as we all lead up to the first day of school, we'll have traditional media coverage as well as our own content pushing out following Dr. Bryant, also connecting with new teachers and principals in their schools. In addition to what other requests that we get from traditional media for issues that are facing the district. So that's kind of where we are. We're sort of like halfway through our, our back-to-school campaign. So if you guys are seeing that or hearing it, please give me some feedback. We're trying some different things. I'm looking for feedback on how it's going, what your perspectives are, and how we can make improvements going into next year.
I'm just gonna share, I'm excited about the, being able to report, we're going to do a bridge of reporting to the community about lessons. Staff and not having to, I feel like it gives the families a sense of relief that they're not going to have to worry about, you know, influx in transportation and those kind of changes as we started the school year last year, so.
I had a sort of a comment, I appreciated that from the start of the school, seeing the signs going up at different schools, it spread to me when I saw that school starting one hour later, sign put up at our high school. That I thought, ooh, I hope people don't think that there would be an additional one-hour late start at the high school because they were already doing that. So I mean, I, I saw it in a same billboard. And at an elementary school or a middle school, I mean, it made total sense, but at the high school, I don't know, it made me think, oh, I hope this doesn't accuse anyone.
Well, that's.
That was my only thought.
Yeah.
That maybe it needed a specific, separate billboard.
Yeah, thank you.
Although before, even though they had a one-hour late start, the buses didn't change.
Oh, okay.
But now the buses are going to be showing up an hour later.
Okay.
So.
So there is value in that sense.
There is value in them knowing that, that their kids won't be at the bus stop at the original.
It's a challenge to, you know, convey a lot of information while somebody is driving along at forty-five miles an hour. Yeah. So, thank you for, for that. And I also certainly saw bus drivers waving. And I thought, oh, gosh, I hope this doesn't mean the worst. I hope this doesn't mean that we're really short, but we're not. And it seems to have worked, and I waved back.
Yeah, I think for me, I saw Jim the other day, I also think that was probably one of my favorite parts, just seeing the team out there really passionate, engaging, and really trying to work to get folks to join their team. And the event that Jim's team held yesterday at the bus bar was super connective and a lot of just buy-in and you know, connection to your job and your passion and stuff. And so we had a, put together a quick video of it yesterday, and I'm saying, so it's out on Facebook, got some cool remarks from Dr. Bryant, Jim, Heather. But just really showcasing the power of that team and that teamwork and that dedication to making sure that we're getting kids to school. So just, just a real good feeling out of that department.
Oh, may I? Yes, of course. Yeah, I think our back-to-school message is really clear. I think it's very more than what I remember seeing. Remember seeing before, and I'm not comparing, I'm just saying that the information, the frequency of it, the you know, the, the delivery of it, I think, really puts a focus where it's needed right now. Because really, let's be clear, a lot of people have no idea what it takes to educate kids in Anchorage. And we don't tell our story. And unfortunately, we have to, we have to tell the bus driver's story. I love your comments because it connects it back to kids, to learning, and to, you know, our most precious resource. That's what we those are the stories we have not continued to tell.
A lot of our bus drivers are parents.
And that's great.
And so it's a lot more, ownership, ownership. I was telling Jim, I was like, I can't remember, it's buy-in and ownership, and the ownership of, of our bus drivers into the district is, you can just feel it, and just talking to a lot of the new drivers yesterday as parents, just kind of getting some feedback from them.
Yeah.
Obviously, I heard it out about communications. But just, there's, there's, there is a buy-in, the community cares, they want, and you can definitely see that with our bus drivers.
But especially the other pieces that, yes, I love it that their parents, that the taxpayers big time, don't have kids in our schools. And so, you know, it, it does relay the value and then the urgency of, you know, what, not, not just why we exist, but the whole, that whole community commitment to education. So I, I, I'd like being a part of that. I do, I've been a part of that. So. Can you tell us a little bit about what the new people are going to be doing?
Yeah, actually, yeah. So our new hires, we have Oriya Ling Young is going to start next week. He's going to be focused on social media. We lost our social media person this summer, and so I need that engine restarted. I've been trying to do it piecemeal, but we need, needs to get that, we need to restart that engine. So that's going to be the first priority. And then Hans starts mid-next month, and then his priority is going to be internal communications. We've already have an internal communications project in the works with our PMO team where we're revamping the system as a whole, and we've got two programs that we're revamping as well as needing to really kind of unbeat this rat's nest of internal communications. Because we have, as you guys know, you've got the big six, and in addition to those, we have a lot of other things that need to be communicated to the staff and got a lot of things to do. And so our goal here is to make sure that the staff are up to speed and trained and understand before we start talking about things externally. Last thing that we want is a teacher or another staff person being asked by someone or just finding out something through external needs when they should be first informed and listening. So that's what, that is the, the priority for our internal communications.
Great. And for the administration, everything's ready for our for the charter going in and the.
No problems.
Any other questions or comments before we move on?
Well, I would like to tell about our other new hire. That doesn't, that does not get much attention at all. But you've seen the product, and that is, you know, digital content, and that's not just with videos, and it will be with photos as well. But we've got this person strong certified now, and so we really just kind of started on the, on the priorities, which was bus transportation, but then we're going to kind of into more of the classroom part. We've got the Teaching Today series that will kick back up again, and that is hyper-focused in the classroom specifically on our teachers and what they're doing to create the next generation. We also have the Weather Lab segment that's on Channel Two and Channel Five. We bought that sponsorship. The majority of the content was coming out of us. But now we have more ownership of it, more of a partnership with KTUU and KYES for that segment. It's, we've got an opportunity to showcase twenty-six, twenty-eight classrooms starting on September eighth, that'll run through the rest of the school year. That segment will run multiple times on those stations. It'll be a minute and a half to two minutes dedicated to the classroom on what the Weather Lab is about, science, climate, all those things. And we're going to be huddling up with secondary and elementary next week to identify the schools that we're going to get into and really be kind of strategic and intentional with the stories that we're going to tell. Outside of that, we also get a thirty-second spot in the commercial break that we get an opportunity to tell the district's story. So I'm looking at after back-to-school completes on the twenty-first, then I'm going to transition into an attendance message as well as moving in our reading. We've got some internally and external communication plans in the works for our board goal of reading. And as you know, we've got the K through three curriculum and the Alaska REES Act, it's all roped into one. And I've already talked to Member Wilson about having a spot maybe next comms committee meetings specifically on the communications plan around our board goal of reading. So with all that, my point is with our new hire, Mike Need of Rock, is that gives us that support system to help tell more good things that are coming out of the classroom and the district that we just haven't had that opportunity in the past.
Just a point of information, we will, the board will be working on its goals again September fifteen, sixteen, from nine to twelve. So until then, we probably won't have we won't have, we won't, we won't have, we won't be publishing those. They are what they are right now, but they will be some tweaks to them. But the next full robust discussion will be on the sixteenth of September, nine to twelve.
We'll just wait, we'll go through that, and then we'll circle back with comms reading after that.
Okay. Yeah, that, I just didn't want us to get ahead too much. I haven't.
I think that the State Board of Education is not meeting again until October.
Right. So, but I'm hoping.
That's only relevant in so much as, they may or may not change top scores.
Right.
For reading proficiency.
I think they are, but we don't know.
Well, but we don't know what they would.
But I know.
Any possibility energy or reports.
And so, I mean, I mean, you know, but at least after the sixteenth, I think we will have the wording of our goals.
Sure.
And guardrails, and whether we add a guardrail or not. So and then, you know, so the percentage of percentages we can put in later.
Right.
But the, the goal itself, we would have had, I think, ample collaboration to know that this is it. Right?
And Mr. East.
Were you waving back here?
He was waving a while ago, we probably forgot. Sorry.
It had to do with the internal communications, but I can reach out there.
Thank you.
I like the ideas.
Sorry.
All right, maybe I'm failing at glass half full today, but.
I like it. Half-full is good.
Well, I mean, I, I'd like to think of it as happy, but actually, I think of it as thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars empty. But my understanding of reading implementation is that there can be a dip when a new program, it's called an implementation dip. And I think as we're communicating, it was really exciting that we're aligned with an evidence-based program. Actually, my son said, can we get to do that cool new, we like the screen, screener thing, like he was talking about it this morning. Like however interactive it is on computer. Okay. Said, don't try to live. My point is that if, nothing is only a magic bullet, right? And I think it's very real to expect that we're going to see teachers that learning about this new curriculum and and implementing it as best they can, but I think we should expect this year an implementation, because that's what evidence suggests is going to happen. And so I don't know how that does need to be a part of a communication strategy. But I think, you know, maybe it's like, okay, this, we're looking at the long, yeah, like the long vision, and we may be working on all that other communications we take care of that. But it's just, that was my thought level, that we're going to be experiencing some excitement and some challenges with that new program this year, and that's just.
Yes, yeah, which, which is why we've got it. We've split it and we have an internal communications plan for reading and that internally is new, and it's for that reason, one of the reasons you just stated. I think I let five parents in this room. Where I'm wearing the wrong clothes, sort of long cordial. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to throw out there is member lessons based on our conversation I would like in future meetings. the CCL Academy updates, so that we can progressively kind of see where, where in the process the team is at. So that would be amazing. So that's going to be really exciting. Any other questions or comments before we move on? So, the welcome back message from the board.
That, yes, yes.
Would you like to?
I, I just wanted to, as the board might recall, two years ago now, maybe a year and a half, we decided we would get rid of ASC, the Board Connect, and we would really focus on ASC. And so part, one of the things, I just wanted to make sure the board was continuously okay with is a welcome back message from the board, which I will work with Jay on and Carl, and then we can get it. I'm sending copies of it, but I don't know how, whether it'll, I don't know what timeline we're on, so are you, are we wanting to do that again? I'm assuming we do.
I personally would love to see it.
Okay, and then, I think, can I go on to the?
Go on.
Uh, uh, I think, can I take that number four while I'm here?
Did you, are you saying you want to, I just want to try to attract you, it's your, in ASC Connect, you, you want, you're looking for?
A welcome back, a welcome back message from the board.
Like inside the ASC.
Inside, inside the ASC, yeah.
Okay.
So it, it could, I, I think, I think we did it last year.
I think you requested a board president update, so that's why maybe you swapped.
Oh, yeah, that's it, okay. Yeah, wherever it goes, I just want to make sure we still want to do that. And I can't, so that was the, that, that, that was that, just making sure that there is, that we, that I don't get left out and the board is okay with me writing that message again. And then, if I can go, jump to number four, since I'm talking, the community engagement calendar, I didn't send that to Amanda. But the last time we updated it was ten twenty, wait, ten twenty-two, I believe, yes. So we updated it almost a year ago, and I will bring it back, I will bring a draft back next, for the next meeting, to get, so that we are on track with our, you know, this is, the purpose was to increase opportunities for the school board to engage in ongoing two-way communication with stakeholders. So in August, it would be our back-to-school message and media and activities. September, it's our joint assembly meetings. The pieces that we're going to have to talk about were, we were asking the special, like, the military to report, maybe we made room on our agenda for reports, and that was the military student multicultural concerns. And I just need to make sure we are still okay with that, because we have not had, I think that we have native advisory committee has been coming back to us quarterly, so they don't come every single time, but it's a quarterly thing. So it is time for us to update that, and I will bring that back to everybody at the next meeting, so that we can make sure that everything that we want to have on the calendar for this coming school year is on. So I think we're on track for August and September, because all we have was a military report in August, ASC back-to-school media and activities, MJ's already covered, mostly covered that. In September, military report, student advisory board, and a joint assembly meeting. Do we know the date of that? It is September. And we need to really, this will be the first, we have, I don't think Dr. Bryant has engaged around the, the reports. He is familiar with the military report, student advisory report, but we also had multicultural, the MEAC report, and Kate Cathy was going to work with those groups, with your advisory groups, to make sure that they were focused on our goals and our guardrails. That's September fifteenth, okay, September fifteenth for the assembly. Okay, yes.
Well, it just occurs to me, I mean, but I think those are important, those are all important sessions, but there's not a lot of engagement, whereas when I feel like I'm at a community council meeting, that's when there's a significant amount of engagement, you know, I will feel questions from the community members.
Community councils are part of, so advisory, community council, Federation of Community Council, Chamber meetings, they're all
So, no, I mean, I think it's going to be like
They are the best, or most direct.
The most direct forms of community.
Yeah.
But
The, the issue though is, is that they all focus on, they don't, parents are not usually involved in community council meetings.
Yeah, because they're possible.
They're kind of your parents. Exactly, and with them going back to in face, now, they used to, we had more parent input in community council meetings when we were doing them all online, because parents could get their kids to dinner and listen to the thing and comment. But now they're going back to face-to-face. We, I, my guess is we won't have as many parents. But yes, so mu, the monthly things are, whatever advisory committee we are responsible for, our community council meetings, the Federation of Community Council, and Chamber of Commerce meetings, those are staples, those are part of, but the ones that come before the board would be the superintendent's advisory committees with a framework where it's focused on our goals and guardrails, what they are doing to focus on our goals and guardrails. So, so at the next meeting, I would like to bring that back to the committee. We've already, I, I don't, I think we already approved it, Andy, right? You were Communications Chair, we did, we did take that to the board, right? I think we did, to have this engagement plan, so I, all we need to do is just agree on the contents.
Thank you.
Here, I think all we need to do is agree on the contents of the plan. We've already, we already have, we already agreed as a board to do the plan, to have it.
They just asked a clear phone question, so for the MEAC, you were proposing that they come to the board during the report section? Would they be quarterly, like, the next?
Yes, it would be, it would be, so first quarter, yeah, it's broken up by quarters, and I can share, I can share this with you.
Or actually, I think that might have been annual, or at least I only
It, it can be whatever you think it needs to be, but the way it is right now, it's, it's, I think, twice a year they come to the board.
Because the only thing I want to ensure is that we have our
Because it's your committee.
Right, and I want, I don't want to react to the report at the board, I want to make sure that our MEAC meetings are happening ahead of the board, so that way we're all kind of talking the same language.
This does not interfere with the MEAC committee meetings at all. It is just a checkpoint to see how, what they're doing that hooks to our goals and our guardrails. We had a struggle in the beginning where people thought they could just come and just, you know, complain, but we tried to give more guidance, and so they have been coming. You know, they still are able to give us that kind of, you know, that kind of feedback, but the, the intent of the report is focused on our goals and our guardrails. So I would, I would like to bring, I'll bring back an updated calendar for the next meeting, and hopefully we'll be ready to move forward with whatever format we come with. Now, the military report is every month, I think that was the, military and students report every month. The others rotate.
Students twice a month.
I mean, twice, and every, yeah, military once a month, students twice a month, every, right. I'll get on that, thank you. Or I'll give it to Dora.
Appreciate it.
Door, Dora.
Any other questions, comments, anyone online? Good to be on. So the next thing on the agenda is the parent engagement plan, and Tony, I know you talked at the beginning of the meeting, is there anything you wanted to add?
Not yet. We have some things in the works that we're doing around some of our intervention initiatives, and I'm working with federal programs to put together maybe some listening sessions that I'll have more information on in the next couple of weeks. Aside from that, we're just really trying to be in the community and push the same back-to-school messaging and registration. So right now, we'll be engaging with a lot of parents, as we did last week with the principals. We were invited to quite a few open houses and things like that, so that's what we're doing over the next month.
Can I, can I put in a request that those engagement and outreach opportunities that you shared that information with the board members, so that if we want to attend as well, we can do that, so that we're working more collaboratively?
Yes.
Rather than administrative stuff, just so, so, so of that stuff, you know, board members don't necessarily hear about or get invited to, and some of it I would, I personally would like to attend if I'm able to, so we can just improve that part of the communication so that we can have the opportunity to show, that'd be great. Member lessons?
I have a question, I don't know if it belongs here or back to school, but it's a question about making sure parents are informed accurately about the late start Mondays, and if they need to keep their, if they need to drop their student off at a normal time. Is, is that meant, are our parents able to drop their students off at the school site at a normal time? And is that messaging conveyed in like a direct way, systematic way?
Sorry, so that's why it's in our messaging already. So when I was talking earlier about the sponsored content, and specifically on enrollment and registration of school start times, at-school start times messages about the fact that schools are going to be open and ready and available at regular time for kids to be dropped off while our staff are doing PLCs, so that message is getting out. Okay, that's the district level side, and then I've asked them to make sure that principals are prepared and ready to give that site-based information that may look very different.
Sure, okay, thanks.
And how, how are principals doing that? Are they just communicating with entry registration?
I, so all of them have different mechanisms for how they like to communicate with their families, whether it's an open house sort of thing, or letters that go out. I've talked to several at Principal's service, and they mentioned they do newsletters for back-to-school, and I just personally like to make sure that you can keep the plan, and of course, the districts will read them.
Okay. Yeah, that's a, that's a crucial piece, because I, I mean, if they're sending them back to the school, to their debt, to their assigned school for directions, then it's great to know principals are going to be there.
They need to know the plan, and then I think all the principals are very curious to know how many families will utilize that normal drop-off, and so will we, because long-term, we need to figure out how we deploy resources to schools that have a lot of normal time drop-offs. So that's why the district's going to be at every elementary school for a month at least, so we get that data.
And the PLC for each school, does that look different for each school, or is it consistent throughout the district?
It's, I would say it's somewhat consistent, we're using the same provider to help us develop the plan, but then we're providing it to staff members at the school to kind of facilitate their individual PLCs. So it's not like district-wide, all, all classrooms are talking about the same thing. But in terms of what the district's role is, we want the PLCs to be conducted with fidelity, because what makes a PLC different from a training is that the PLC is really owned by the teachers, and it's not really an administrative tone, it's what it's about. So that's why classroom to classroom, it's different, and if you have a, it's very teacher-driven.
And that's what the hundred and sixty thousand dollars PLC, that's a, and it's ages for.
Right.
I'm very impressed.
Are you guys, when you message out that they can drop them off, are we also about, you know, it's not encouraged because of the walking teaching time?
That's not what families want to know.
I know, it's like, what are the messages, right?
No, families need, families want to know if they can still drop their kids off, and they want to make sure that they are supervised. So messages for families, and letting them know that the schools are looking for them to still drop off their kids if they can't utilize the bus transportation or wait an hour. So it's just specifically targeted for families.
No, I know that, but we're also not encouraging it, like, we're not, we're not asking for our kids over at the site.
No, it's not a call to action. Yeah, no, that's I think taking your concern, like, we're trying to hold instructional times sacred. I know that there's some worry that if there's a lot of students being dropped off at the normal time, we might be pulling teachers to assist. That's not our plan, A B C, and that's why I'm sending the district off the staff to meet the schools at that time, to be that first layer supporter, and then other staff, like, assist principal, assist assistant principal, to be that second layer.
Spend.
Yes, spend and err. It's really the elementary that I think are most vulnerable. Some of, some of the language is like, if needed, if they need to drop them off, you know what I mean? So it's not a, it's not a call to action, it's more of just letting them know that there, that option is there for them if needed.
Thank you for allowing me to wrap one of these stories. And so I think that's, I think the part of our agenda, does anybody have, like, back-to-school, we already talked about, got to cover that already, does anybody have any other questions, comments?
We, we didn't do number three.
We didn't do number three?
And
Oh, sorry, we skipped right past that.
Excuse me.
I'm going to give it right back to you on that one.
Well, I just want to remind board members to please, we are bylaws. And when you are speaking on your own behalf, just be sure to clear that you are, be real clear that you're speaking on your own behalf. And, and, I mean, we've been doing good, I'm not complaining, I, I just know that some things, we step on our own feet sometimes when we inject our personal opinions as if it's board opinion. And so we just have to be careful, and I just want to, I was trying to find out where that is in policy. Amanda, did you pull it, could you pull, there it is. So there's, there's, there's a cup, there's that ninety-two point, what's that, ninety point one two?
Nine zero one two.
Yeah, nine zero one two, and then there's another piece, there's another, that, that, there's that policy that talks about everything. And so if you would just read ninety twelve, that would make me very, very happy. We have looked at it already as part of our, we looked at it in January, and we finished looking at our bylaws in June. But if, 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 if anything is missing, or we need to rethink something, I'd rather do it sooner rather than later. But I think, I think our policy is really clear, but we have to hopefully encourage each other to follow it. That's all I have, I'm not going to read the policy for everybody, I mean, they can read it from their own.
Thank you.
Although I can, anybody want me to read? I can read, I can read it.
We're good, we're good. Any other questions, comments, suggestions, anyone online? Right, I think we are at the end of our agenda, and everybody probably wants to kind of stretch, so, did you?
Well, I'm just, in terms of interested in superintendent's perspective as to, I think I know, I know this, but so I guess I'm just going to try to make sure everybody else knows that we are ready to school, we have transportation, we are working on our student petition, if there are any potential surprises.
There's, there's always an earthquake.
Yes, because
Yeah.
That would knock on my place.
So that's right.
Phenomena.
Uh, absence of snow, of snow again.
We're supposed to be getting a state on, you got frozen alien.
Oh, Lord.
No, I mean, I think it's going to be a good year, I mean, this time last year, there was a lot of chaos, a lot of anxiety, just a lot of worry, I think, and this year I feel really good, I feel like, by this time, I have the earth, natural proceeds from the team. But really, the only thing
For these medals you can cheer.
The only thing that I want to make sure that goes right is this PLC, because I know that's a big shift. It's something that was really important for the team to get to the finish line, and we did, but we don't want this late start situation to blow up in our faces. So that's why I would personally, along with dozens of that sort of people, be at the schools every Monday. It's really important so we understand what are the ups.
And, and it's a little early, but you know, when, when the bond test, the most recent bond test, you know, that, that, that kind of, it's a future for improving childcare, early childcare in, in Anchorage.
You're probably fourteen?
The prop, yeah, the prop, fourteen or thirteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, so it's a little soon for that now, but at some point Uh, you know, I, 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 I hope we are connecting, continuing to connect with the people with our, you know, the public, not the public.
The childcare providers?
Right, the childcare providers that might, we might be able to partner with, say, next semester or next year.
Right.
Uh, to, to at least, to, to, uh, you know, especially when it comes to the. Yeah.
So Jim is working on, on something to, to that effect.
Oh, see, you just.
I reckon since June.
Uh, so he's working on, right, to really like share more about what, what's on his, Prop fourteen.
By September, yeah, we'll, we'll have the pieces starting to come into place.
Yeah, but we're thinking Prop fourteen, we're thinking childcare, we're thinking about making sure that when this will start changing, time changes do happen. Um, that we're able to offer some sort of relief to kids, that's the vision, so we need some.
Right, but the reality, okay, thank you, I'm just glad, glad that you guys are, you know, that you, that vision.
Beginning of June.
All right.
It's just, it's a lot to pull together.
I know, I know.
So.
Wonderful, thank you.
Some more to come.
Wait, 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 when will they get that first, when will that first round of money, like, January?
They're probably being, by the time they actually approve it, it'll be like the marijuana tax money, it'll probably end up being February-ish. Uh, I've been told that, I guess their committee is forming pretty quickly.
Did we have somebody on?
Um, I think one of our board members has been invited to the committee or is trying to get on the committee, or maybe it was informal. Um, that, that board member's not here today, but, um.
Well, we didn't know that, okay, but go on.
I didn't hear it from the board member, I heard it from an assistant member, so. I'm sorry, I.
Well, we will be.
I don't know what invited means, because sometimes it just means, hey.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I think they do intend to have, um, at least some partnership with, with, with AST. But I don't think they've, I haven't heard anybody mention like an AST person on the committee, I think it's mostly community members.
And it may be, and I don't know, I know early in the planning that was talked about, but I don't know, I don't think it survived the.
Yeah, I was told sometime in August it was going to start, but I don't know.
Awesome.
I didn't follow up on it.
Okay, I think the other, you know, surprise, not really surprise, but we were anticipating vacancies in certain positions. Um, and today, um, we signed the LOA with to make some adjustments that we discussed. So now like we're going to pivot to a big, um, strategy on, hey, we're hiring up here professionals and these are the incentives. And hopefully the surprise will be we'll have more full positions, so hopefully.
Right.
Yeah, pleasant surprise.
Thanks.
Awesome. We're just.
Oh, was that rock, rock?
I had a text from.
You want to join?
In relation to buzz meetings.
And since it doesn't sound like the ELA update will be ready, timing wise for the next meeting, maybe we'll see CL update. Followed by the ELA update. Something, right?
Yeah, and I, I, um.
All these agreements.
So I, and that you wanted that to be a, a standing item on your list, correct?
Yes, just, I mean, not like taking.
So and I, and I think really we can almost, for these, for, for, uh, commu- for finance and communication, you guys cannot, especially for communication. You could almost have a standing agenda each time that we can fit our, that we can just report on. So, uh, you don't have to like reveal it every time, is all I'm saying, but it's up to you men to care.
No, I think that sounds fantastic. It's, well, it's an opportunity, it is for me, at least this meeting to, to throw out, you know, communications meeting to communicate a little bit.
And the other thing is, I think we decided to add, um, new business to each committee agenda. Yeah, that way it, it, because, because of the times, because of the time. Um, but that way people can add things at the meeting that would not have been given to them in a timely manner, much like what we did with governance.
I think that'll work nicely for this one. Yeah, great suggestion.
No, Jim, everything good with you, getting ready to school?
It's good, I mean, there's, you know, construction delays because stuff isn't coming to Alaska as quick as everyone would like, but, um, most of stuff is.
Most of stuff is good.
What about you guys back here? I mean, everybody excited to come back? Say yes.
Yes.
There's the question and the answer.
I think so, I mean, I just, you guys, we didn't talk about it, but the New Educator Academy is next week and that's something that's going to be great. And we're going to be over there and we also have our, our teaching institute going on over at Service next week, um, another professional development opportunity. And so, yeah, we're all.
And Andy will feel good after this next meeting because he'll have the money he needs to move forward with you. She is not playing, honey, she's not trusting everybody. Okay.
Are you guys all going to come to the New Educator Academy?
I, I would love to.
Is it all day? Is it three days?
Uh, it starts Monday, starts Monday, you, are you?
I can look at a calendar for next week. Day by day speaking.
Oh, really?
And where is it?
You said it's Monday?
Oh, it's Monday to seven, oh, it's because we have our first Alaskan Institute.
Oh, we have a first Alaskan Institute.
It's all, it's all next week, well, it's Monday, Tuesday, it is, I think it's all next week, so you guys.
I can come Tuesday.
If you guys, if you really want to like, obnubrate and meet people and come for lunch.
Oh.
Come for the lunch, I don't know.
I can come on Tuesday.
East.
All right.
Two hundred and fifty-six of your new educator.
Yeah, can, can we sign?
I'll serve you.
No, I want to, I want to give you a brief.
You don't want to go there. Party's been too close.
And that's the teacher cabinet. Are we ready? Are we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, yes.
I thought, oh, I can't though.
You can't, the mark, are we ready to adjourn?
Oh, yes, I, I moved, we adjourn.
Second, okay.
Right.
Now we can check for eight minutes. For eight minutes, before-